But. To get distribution of it unless it's a massively produced brand is very difficult. And we're really not into that. We're into the small, local stuff. So finding a farmer that has excess maple syrup that they want to unload and let, if you know one, I'd love to hear it because we would love to sell that and a lot of local honey. But a lot of these guys sell out of all that stuff without even needing a distributor's help.
Last but not least, the first page covers potato chips, popcorn, chips. You know, samples really would have been a big.
Well, I was, I was a little, I was a little offended. I saw all the Lay's chips over here and stuff. And when I first came in, I was like, I was like, I'm getting you guys Fox chips for your meetings from now on.
You, I just had a quick question. You mentioned you employed local workers. How many people do you have working for you?
Right now we have 15, but in the past three or four weeks, our business just went on steroids. Like just all these, whether it's the parlor ice cream, the Maine crisps, the, they just gave all their distribution over to us. It just, brands get to a certain point, they can only self distribute for so long. And then they're becoming a distributor rather than producing ice cream every day. And, and so they need the help of, of us. And it's a very difficult industry for a lot of small brands to get into. The big, huge distributors just don't give them any attention and really kind of run them through the wringer. And so we've kind of fit in, even through the whole COVID thing. You think it would crush someone like us, but we actually came out of it flying. Because all the big distributors had higher minimum orders. We don't do minimum orders. If you want to buy one box, we'll deliver it. And our business has always grown from that. So that's where we kind of fit in, where all these small slip hires could get a chance to get a foothold and get a chance to sell to 900 different retailers. We actually got three or four brands into Hannaford, like slab for them with our relationship with the Hannaford.
Yeah, that, that was going to be my other question is kind of the scale of the customers that you supply to. I, I know personally, I, I see the products from Fox chips to parlor ice cream at Rosemont's. I see them at Towne Landing Markets and at the food stop here in Cumberland. And so what's the scale here in terms of your smallest customer versus a Hannaford? It seems like it's a pretty large spread.
Uh, well, like I, I was a broker before, so most, I was calling on Hannafords and Wegmans and these big. I, I really hated it to be honest with you because it, it's just going through all the loopholes to get to a brand and then not even get in six months or a year later. And back to my freshman at the days, that small little cafe would do tremendous volume of fresh squeezed juice. And I always remembered that. I was like, you know, there's some business there. And I think that's how brands are built is not at Hannaford, not at Market Basket, but at these small retailers and farm stands. And, and so I just wanted to go after that business. I could have probably turned on my business big time with all my chain connections, but I didn't want to do that. I wanted to build something that I wasn't beheld into Walmart or any of these other big chains. Now with COVID happening, it was nice to have Hannaford and Market Baskets because, well, everybody else, a lot of people are closed. But it's still maybe represents 15% of our whole business is the chain business. Everything else is small independent retailers. So that's our bread and butter.
I want to thank you for choosing Cumberland.
Oh.
Um, I personally have toured the Fox potato chip place in Mapleton.
Well, you know what? I haven't, believe it or not.
You need to go.
He's got a new facility, by the way, which he just moved into this week.
If you think Cumberland is small, go to Mapleton, Maine.
Yeah.
I snowmobile up there. All went along. I have friends that live in Mapleton and it is a wonderful community. And they're wonderful people that own that.
Yeah.
I mean, I congratulate you for selling their product. I mean, they're just, it's great. I mean, so.
Yeah. I mean, when he came to us, he had zero, he had zero sales with us six years ago. And I think this year we'll probably do 1.4 million of Fox chips.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I'd like to welcome you also in one of, we had someone else wanted a credit enhancement agreement. And, but they had really no connection to the community. And they were just an establishment on Route One. So I applaud you for wanting to become part of the community. And if you're not a member of the Cumberland North Yarmouth Facebook page, please join it. Because, no, 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 I'm for a reason. Because we have so few businesses in our community that it's like Food Stop and Cop Motors and Story Brothers and all our businesses keep getting hit by the same booster group. Well, today I saw a request for maybe a business sponsorship for the Greeley graduation signs that go on the front lawn. They do a poster size sign of each Greeley student at graduation. And they need some sponsorship for that. So whoever put that up there, this gentleman at the podium's name is Chuck Larson. And he owns North Atlantic Naturals on Route One. And he says he wants to be involved in our community. So go hit him up. Contact me if you want his phone number and I'm happy to give it to you because I have his card.
It's making it awful hard for me to ask the hard questions about why we should give him a tax enhancer.
Well, no, I want to give a tax, I want to give a tax break to someone who's going to help grow our community in lots of ways. Employing people, you know, maybe you're, well, no, I can't, I have to save my jobs for later.
I will keep you in business just for the kombucha that you bring into the community. So thank you for that. My gut microbiome thanks you for that. You are a hero in my view and welcome to the community.
Yeah, kombucha was where we got started. Remember the kegerators you saw in the Hannafords? That was us back in, but I got, I got killed by the COVID, you know, like no one was doing self-serve. So it's, you got scared as at first because it was, you know, quarter million dollars worth of business of a small company. But once that kind of went away, you realize what, like I get, say 11 service calls a week and 10 of them were kegerator related, you know, this thing won't shut off or, you know, I'm out of CO2 or I'm, we're out of bottles. It was kind of a royal pain to be honest with you. But yeah, the bottles is good. Yeah.
What is the value of? What, what is the value of 50% and what would be the duration?
It's 12,000.
12,000.
So it's 14 years, June 2038 is this, it's in TIP District Three. So 50% of the captured property taxes would be. Yep, about 12,000. And it would start with the September 15th, 2023 tax bill.
So by that time, Jackson will be the top scorer of the high school hockey team.
It was in the, it's not in our packet. You have it here in hard. I know, I was looking. So yes, but probably good to state for all that that is the, that is what was brought forward by the TIP committee.
I would make a motion.
Oh, yeah. Is there any public comment? I will take your motion.
I move to authorize a credit enhancement agreement for property located at 68 U.S. Route One as recommended by the TIF committee.
Second.
Third.
Any questions or comments that the council?
I would just like to also add and echo the sentiment. Thank you for choosing Cumberland. And thank you for contributing to the community. This is something that we on the council hear a lot of is can we do a better job of trying to find businesses to operate in our business zones to help broaden our tax base?
Yeah.
And kind of alleviate some of the pressure on, on homeowners in the community. And I know there's a credit enhancement agreement here that obviously lowers that amount. But to me, it's part of our pledge. If you drive into Cumberland on Route One, there's a blue sign that says certified business friendly. And so for me, if there are viable options for us to make it easier for a business to operate and grow and flourish in our community, we want to take advantage of those. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Hold on, we have to take a vote.
Sure.
All those in favor? Now you can say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll be going to Mapleton in about December if you want to go out.
Well, he, he built a brand new facility.
Oh, did he?
Yeah. So he actually shut down this week, but when you go up there, you get to see his new facility.
I'll look it up this summer.
Yeah.
Uh, 23-030 to hold a public hearing to consider an act or on a liquor license application for CM Hospitality DBA Trackside operating at the Cumberland Fairgrounds. This one is a renewal. It has been renewing and it just was missed. So I know personally, this is the first time I've seen it, but I do want folks to know this is a renewal at an establishment that's been at the fairgrounds. Anything specific?
No, I, I think we handled it as a catering license before because of the short duration. When Jen and I looked at it, we thought it would be best if it came to the council because of the extended season with the OTB and the regular season. So it made more sense to do it as a regular.
Formal liquor.
Formal liquor license.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Any comments from the public? All those in favor? Thank you. 23-031 to hold a public hearing to consider an act on a mass gathering permit for the Southern Maine Coastal Classic Dog Show to be held May 18th through 21st at the Cumberland Fairgrounds. I think this was last year too. And any questions or comments from the council?
I'll give you a motion. I move to approve the mass gathering permit for the Southern Maine Coastal Classic Dog Show to be held May 18th through the 21st at the Cumberland Fairgrounds.
Do you want, do you want your book back?
You better hold on to that one.
Sorry about that, Mark.
No. And I also realized, any comments or questions from the public? I have a motion. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. So now probably the most important item on our agenda. 23-032 to set the week of May 15th through 19th for spring bulky item pickup week.
So moved.
Mr. Manager, do we not have a yard sale at the fairgrounds just prior to this?
No, we usually try to do that graduation weekend.
Oh, okay.
It's coming. It's coming in June, I think.
I, I just remember it being sort of close to Mother's Day where you kind of get rid of stuff and then you get more stuff.
Yeah, just leave it at the curb.
I heard it on the radio. I think it's in June this year.
It is.
Yeah.
Two weeks before graduation.
All right.
I guess I will just, public service for anyone watching is please look. Um, I know Whitney just stepped out, but Whitney will be posting what's acceptable, what's not as part of bulky pickup. Please just take a look at that. Um, then folks are upset when their items are still sitting at the end and they have to drag them back. And so just please take a few minutes to go on the ECO Maine site, go on the Cumberland site to just confirm kind of which items are acceptable. There is a lot of them, but this, there are also those that are not.
Correct. Bulky is bulky means it doesn't fit in a trash bag. So.
And also not a chemical, no hazardous materials. Separate, we will, there was a separate day for that. Um, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. 23-033 to consider an act on approving a request for the use of the Valhalla Recreation Center for a fundraiser for Mike Timmons' family on June 9th from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. pursuant to March 23, 2023 council policy. I believe the applicant has.
Or withdrawn. I'd say withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Okay. I was like, go ahead, do you have a question?
I have a question, Mr. Manager, in regards to the use of that. Uh, why would anybody have to come and make application for the council? And why is this just something that's done at the front desk?
Great question. I can answer it for you.
Okay.
We, this would take place during golf season. And so the policy we passed at, I think, the last meeting.
In March.
Was if an event, if an event was during golf season, during kind of golf play time. So that was.
Yeah, we, we did talk at, at length with staff and it was going to be at a time when we didn't have a tournament. So that made it easier and during a time when it was near the end of the day. And it, it worked out okay, but you basically took that away from staff and said, you know, if people want to come during these extenuating circumstances, they should plead their case to you. Because we just say no, it makes it honestly a lot easier for us. So.
So this, again, it wouldn't always have to if that was your.
Right, right. And I remember us discussing that in the orders committee.
Moving to 23-034 to hold a public hearing to amend Chapter 17 animal control of the Cumberland Code to be consistent with state law regarding cats. I want to give this one to you.
I, I don't know if I can do it justice. Shirley, do you have, do you have any better? I can't do it with a straight face, so.
So we changed some definitions for what animals at large are and roaming animals. And pretty much restricted it to canines, the dog species, and removed cats to match up with state. up with state law. Now, that's not saying the state's not going to make their own regulations down the road about cats. People are concerned about cats eating birds. I think a bird ate one of our cats, but, you know, owls like cats.
Yeah. And there's a lot of hawks.
Anyway, it just, it effectively removes cats from our ordinance so that our animal control officer can do his job and have legitimate answers for people who call complaining about their neighbor's cat in their yard.
Can I just add, just for the record, that this is one of my favorite council discussions that we've ever had. It's one of my favorite council discussions that we've ever had.
Oh, you should have been here for chickens.
Chickens was much better. The 11-page chicken ordinance is second to none.
So, if we see.
That we visited five times.
Okay, so this is to bring this in accordance with state law.
Correct, at the end of the day. Do I have any questions or comments from the public? I will entertain a motion.
Mark, go right ahead and get that.
Thank you very much.
Let you do this, Mark.
I move to amend Chapter 17 Animal Control of the Cumberland Code to be consistent with state law regarding cats as recommended by the Ordinance Committee.
Yeah, second. All those in favor?
Pause in the air, let's go.
Thank you. 23-035, to authorize the town manager to accept payment for delinquent and current taxes in the amount of $41,290.36 on property identified as tax map U13-011-000-A and prepare and execute a release deed.
So moved.
Can I ask, is this the same person who's been giving us a little bit? Oh, okay.
This seems like a pretty significant amount. I mean, this is to have the property go back to that individual, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I would second Counsel Cops' motion.
Yay for them.
I was going to say, Bill, this guy promised us, he told us what he's going to do and he's actually followed through it and done it.
Surprising. Yeah, it's hard. It's hard when it's that amount, you know, and it might go up for sale, but that's okay. He got his house in order before he tried to do it, so that's why they come back to you and ask, we don't have a staff, the authority to do this. And I think it's a good thing for you to see as well. So, it does happen.
I have a motion and a second. Oh, yes, sir.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I'm familiar with the property.
Okay. All those in favor? And one abstention. Moving to new business, just real quick, as I mentioned, we had a budget workshop prior to this evening's meeting. We have another one prior to our April 24th meeting from 5:00 to 7:00. And then, we will review the full budget starting Saturday, April 29th at 8:00 a.m. until completion. And then, that sets up for the council to take action at the following meeting. With that, I will start with you, Mr. Cop.
I have my $20 again for the 4-H food pantry. Mr. Stiles is sitting in the back row making sure I come up with it every week, so. Thank you, Bill. It is a worthy cause and that is all I have. They're digging for their wallets.
I have cash.
Thank you very much. Oh, even Mr. Stiles is digging his out.
Look what you staved.
I know. Go ahead, take.
So, the Lands and Conservation Commission, we're looking to schedule a walk-through at Twinbrook with Paul Larevee, the Town Forester. The purpose of this is to see the area that's been harvested over the past couple of years as well as an area that's really being impacted by invasives. And ultimately, you know, that, that subcommittee is really just trying to showcase the invasive management strategies that are currently at work as well as those that the LCC hopes to employ in the future. So, a couple of dates are bouncing around and we can coordinate with this offline as well, but looking at the potential of maybe doing May 8th or May 22nd, both of which are council evenings, but the idea would be to go from 5:00 to around 6:30 or so so that we'd have time to come back. Or, you know, the lovely Mr. Shane thought it might be good to do a Saturday morning in May as well, maybe around 7:00 a.m. I'm shaking my head at the time, but maybe we could do.
That might have been a little of me, too, just saying.
Early bird. But, yeah, anyway, so, super flexible and we can kind of lock in a date, but I know that May is really kind of supposed to be the best month because while we thought about maybe going a little bit earlier, we want to be able to see the leaves on the actual plants itself and those aren't really going to develop until the month of May. So, we'll take that as a to-do. Coastal Waters Commission, we're going to be meeting on the 18th of April to continue the discussion about the town-owned dinghies and possible light watercraft storage as part of kind of that larger discussion about adding an additional 10 moorings to Broad Cove. So, we'll report back on that. And then, finally, last week, Bill, Whitney and I went to the equity training at MMA in Augusta, which was fantastic. Great day, lots, lots to walk away with, lots of ideas. One thing I would love to really see if we could roll out is possibly kind of creating some kind of calendar or in addition to the calendar that we currently have as a town, including some of the major, kind of the major religious and cultural holidays across the board. MSAD 51 has recently done this. Personally, I know I've missed at least two committee meetings this year because they were scheduled during either the Jewish High Holy Days or, you know, more recently over Passover. I think a lot of these committee meetings could probably be easily rescheduled so that people in the town don't have to make those kind of tough decisions. So, I think that that would just, in the spirit of inclusivity, be something that we should, you know, look to roll out maybe over the coming months. And Bill, anything to add to that? I don't think logistically it would be too.
Do you want to try to follow what the schools put out for the dates? Because I don't know if theirs is all-inclusive.
Theirs is all-inclusive, so, you know, religious and cultural holidays as well. I'll reach out to, I think it was their Equity Committee that may have rolled that out, so I can reach out to them and see kind of what their thinking was and we can at least use that as a springboard for next steps. Thank you. That's it. Appreciate it.
Mr. Vale?
I have a question more than anything. Can we have a meeting with the School Board Wednesday night?
I was going to highlight that as well, but I will just say that. So, just a reminder to the council members as well as those at home, April 12th, so this Wednesday at 6:00, your Town Council, North Yarmouth Select Board and the MSA D51 Board, along with their Town Manager and Superintendent, will be meeting in workshops, so no action taken. The public is welcome to witness and listen into that conversation. It will also be livestreamed, so you will be able to watch that from home as well. From the school YouTube, I think Whitney has included it in the crier and whatnot. I just wanted to be clear, it'll be through the Geiger Room, so the old gym, 6:00. That is all I had, so go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just also, on that joint School Board, Select Board and Town Council meeting, it is an example in my mind. When folks say we need to be communicating, we need to be talking with the School Board, we need to be telling them about what's going on, we need to be talking with them about potential housing plans and changes in our community, this is exactly that. And so, I want folks to come and I think it's very important that we have these regularly and we continue that dialogue. So, I just wanted to say that. I also want to let folks know that in terms of what we as a council are trying to do to make it more affordable for folks to stay in our community, as we all know, we've been working for quite some time as a council to try to get legislation passed at the state level to permit municipalities to create their own partial senior tax deferral programs. And I'm happy to report that our bill that we drafted that was introduced by Representative Moriarty, it was co-sponsored by Senator Purse, as well as representatives in Brunswick, Yarmouth, and Falmouth and Brewer, is known as LD, it's got its own LD number now, it's LD 1345, and it is before the Joint Standing Committee on Taxation in Augusta. I am actually testifying in support of the bill with Representative Moriarty on Wednesday afternoon, so I will be coming straight from Augusta to our joint session that evening. I'm hopeful, it's one of many bills that's being discussed with the Taxation Committee, kind of pooling them all together if they in any way relate to LD 290. In the event LD 290 is changed, our position and our hope is that the legislature and the Taxation Committee really sees our bill as kind of an alternative supplement that municipalities can have their own programs to help target relief to seniors where needed in communities. So, LD 1345, feel free to monitor that online and, yeah, I'll be testifying this week. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel E.
Just a couple of things, Allison. First, Ron, your credibility is never, integrity is never in question here, never.
Thank you.
If, look, you and Shirley got a big families in this town and you guys always go above and beyond to avoid any conflict. And I'm always proud of this board. Bob, you just did it. If we get the slightest conflict, you know, we step aside, so it's never in question with us. I just want to wish Brenda the best. She's dealing with some family stuff and 100% behind you, Brenda, and we're thinking of you. On Saturday, five of us attended the Public Safety Banquet. Bill, I could, I've always been proud of our public safety, but you walk away with that and just, you shake your head and say amazing, our people are, police, fire, rescue. They do a great, great job. And last week was tough on our public safety. We had some stuff going on down on Greeley Road that was very tragic and our people went down to handle it. And then, of course, we had the crash on Route One. And that, we'll be speaking about that more in the time to come, but Scott Hensby did a great job, very proud of him. The Police Department fought, everybody worked together and they literally saved this woman's life and.
Absolutely.
Very, very proud. And finally, one thing I did learn at the banquet the other day is everybody knows George Small. Been a builder in this town for a long, long time. Who was his first worker, Bob? Do you know? The first employee he ever hired?
I do know the answer to that.
That was a long time ago, but I, Carolyn was very quick to tell me that you were the first person George ever hired. So, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
It was only up from there.
Ever for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike.
And just to follow up on that, George has been on the Fire Department 65 years. 65 years a member of the Fire Department. That's older than I am. I mean, I got to stand up for a long time, thanks to Ron's little game. Like, if you've lived in town, five years or less, sit down. 10 years or less, sit down. And I was up for quite a while. All right. After our last meeting, I know you all and I, as I did, got a lot of notes from the community. I want to thank the people who took the time to send notes to us. What, whether they agreed or disagreed with us, they were, for the most part, appreciative of the fact that we really listened or they felt like we really listened. And so, whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I really always want you to feel like you've been listened to. My brother was here for the meeting for something else and he left and he went home and wrote me a note and he said, "I don't know how you do it," which he's only said to me one other time and that was when he was coaching middle school kids because "I don't know how you do it." So, perhaps running a town meeting is a little bit like teaching middle school, I don't know. But, stay in touch, people. This is a work in progress and it's important to make you feel included. We had a rec meeting this week. I was going to tell you to go see Chuck if you wanted a job because maybe he, you could pack trucks for him, but I would like to send you instead to the Recreation Department. They are in dire, I'm not going to say desperate, but dire need of summer staff for their day camps. And the day camps aren't your, what they used to be. These day camps, like, they get on a bus and they go. They go to the beach, they go, they go places, they do things. It's not just a babysitting program. And it can be fun for anyone interested or thinking they might even be interested in working with children in the future. So, head down to Recreation if you'd like to fill out it, or I think you could probably even apply online. I've been watching videos from Sunflower Farm of the baby goats. They're up, they're 12 hours old and they're jumping around, which made me think, do we have any rent-a-goat programs in, I know there are places that do rent-a-goats for invasive species. Just a thought. Could we get some out in the town forest in those places where that grass is growing? Sorry, Bill. I know you're not a farmer. Every time I mention farm animals, you roll your eyes. And I, I think that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. So, appreciate this council. Again, I just, I had the April 12th, I just wanted to remind folks of the meeting this week. So, yeah, that is all I had. I will take.
One more thing.
Oh, please, sir.
The efficiency main thing.
I, I guess what I heard was, I think number one, appreciate the answers that were given back to us, but don't really address kind of the legal questions that we have. So, I think that's probably the number one is show us the language in the actual statute language that is. Two, I think, was having you said you would loop back with those other towns and kind of get a sense of their conversations and kind of where those were at, any interpretations or thoughts they had. I heard Mr. Vale say he would gladly take the opportunity to sit down. I think we all would, but I feel like those are the, the bigger, like, to-dos first.
We'll get those two big ones first.
Yeah, and then I, I think then that warrants that let's sit down and have a conversation once we have that context. And I think everyone's feeling like the spirit is there, but this is a legal thing and.
It's a big thing.
Yeah.
It's a big thing, okay.
Did I miss anything or that's what I was?
Okay, that works.
Thank you. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second, second, second.
Wonderful. All those in favor? Thank you.
Before we all take off.
Hold on one second.
No.
Oh.
Nominating Committee, I was late getting here tonight, so.
Yep. Shirley, the question is on.